You ready?
I'm ready, I'm just standing. Pleasure to meet you.
All right, talk to me.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Alvin. First thing I'll do is approve of the agenda. There are additions to the original published. I'd like to add Alvin Evans with an affidavit and to speak about appointment to the Port Authority. So Randy, or Randy?
I approve, I'll make motion to approve the agenda.
As?
As add those two items from Alvin.
Okay, there'll be items four. All right, Randy?
Your appointments, not four, right? That's five.
He wanted to talk about the appointment.
Under four?
Yes.
So then, okay. Second?
Okay, motion made in second, carry three to zero. All right, first one is the Auditor's Office.
Okay, I have approval for the payroll distribution on September the 12th, and the payroll amounts are $151,272.24. So I need a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Motion made in second, carry three to zero.
And then for the benefit payments, they total $49,746.32. And I need approval of that.
I make a motion to approve?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion made in second, now also go three to zero. Alvin?
Affidavit to present on the Tiff District number three. For the, it's for the mitigation on the site, there has to do an annual mitigation inspection, and this is a fee from the consultants that are doing that, RES, and it's $5,100. So this is the second year of five years, and the IDM can extend it to as much as 10.
So we've got another three years remaining?
At least. Normally, probably, normally they run seven years, what I'm told by the consultants.
So is this normally going to be the fee, or is that a negotiated fee?
There's a contract for.
So it'll be $5,000 here regardless?
Right, and yes.
That would be the question.
Yes, right, and then there's a, there'll be a fee I bring next month, just got the invoice today, for the work that had to be done in order to correct the things that need to be corrected within the mitigation area, so, yeah. But fortunately, there's $2,700, or $270,000, somewhere near it left in the bond issue that's covering these costs, so.
Any other questions for Alvin?
There's no way around this, I ask this all the time.
No, no, there's no way around it. This is federal law and so on, so.
Kate, you got a question?
Alvin, why does Perry County have to veto bill, and are two other properties ceded into this area?
This is all within the Rivian Industrial Park.
Yeah, I think, I know what he's talking about, there's Northern Perry owns a portion of the property, and La Poco owns a portion of the property, and then the remainder is in the authority's name, if I remember correctly, I've looked at it.
Right.
And should they be participating in this cost, or?
Well, this is the, this is the approved, the projects that were approved by the Redevelopment Commission in 2013, 14, 2014, so.
The only question is, if we're approving something for a private property owner with government funds, that would be the question, is tax dollars that are used?
This is, no, no, that's, that's what Tiff's for. That's the whole purpose of Tiff, so.
I don't know if it's to enrich a private property owner. It's for infrastructure that in turn pays us back eventually.
Yes, it does. I thought, that's what this, projects were approved at that time to do, was to do the ditch filled, do the roads and other improvements at Rivian Industrial Park, and there's some other improvements elsewhere.
I'm just, this is probably off subject, but I know at one time, and I read this, that it was critical to get a second entrance in and out of the foundry.
Yes.
But that's never been accomplished, has it?
They've, no, it's not, that's still a project, it's being worked on, as a matter of fact, it's being worked on right now, trying to get that accomplished.
I know, I can remember reading that, that was one of the key goals, I thought.
Well, Switzer Road was constructed in order to make the connections for State Road 66. That's one of the reasons Switzer Road was constructed now. The, and Steel Road became, went into the system for LPA project, that could not, did not occur because it could not, didn't have a high enough rating for the federal government to participate in, so it did not become an LPA project. It's being looked at now as an EDA project, and so there's some things that'll be, after discussion, applications going in for the EDA now in order to get funding for that.
If that ever comes about, we're going to go back through this stream of mitigation once again.
No, this covers all of it. That entire park was covered for, and that was one of the issues that came up too, is, okay, what happens to the 404-401 permits is what causes you to do the mitigation? And, and the question, what was told a few years ago, was that if the, if you did not get the work completed in time, you have to do the mitigation to get, to do the work for the 404-401 permit. And if you did not get the money, the work completed by the time the permit expired, and the one extension, you, they could disregard the mitigation and cause you to do mitigation or additional mitigation because that didn't get the work done. That's been clarified in the last six months, that no, that's not the case, so you have to show, show all the documents that you did the mitigation for the 401-401, which they have it, you're just showing them again what it is, so. So no, there will be no additional work. Mitigation's been, that's done now, that this is part of, is completed, there was also stream, this is stream mitigation, there's also wetland mitigation that occurred, and there's also for cutting the trees, there's, you have to mitigate for the bats, and so the bat mitigation has occurred also, which there's dedicated properties around the area.
This doesn't back up your stating.
This doesn't back up, that mitigation goes forward with, if we're not, if the work is not completed in July 2024, or something like that, is when the permit expires.
July of 2024?
I think it's July, it's in late summer or early fall, I don't remember which is, yeah, 2024 is when that permit expires, but you can just, I got assurances two, three months ago, and that, from the state and feds, that no, you just go over again, and you just show all what you done, and it'll go ahead then. So, yeah, because that was a big concern, the way things were happening, so.
Any other questions? No, I'll make a motion to approve that, David, a 5100.
Second?
No, motion made in second, also go by, go three to zero. We got two.
Well, I don't think he realized when he turned that in, it.
I didn't realize it, copy it on the other side, just do that.
Do you also want to speak now on the Port Authority Board?
If you don't care, I will, so. Just put on the other hat, Perry County Port Authority, we, several years ago, the Port Authority had a incident in which we, that occurred right at the first of the year to the, and it could have, or were afraid it was going to demand attention by the Board of Directors, well, we, at that time, the board elected officers at the next, beginning of the year. And this, well, this, so you went to a two-week period there where there are no legal officers in place. And so it was decided at that time that we should do our elections in, in December for the next year, so on January 1st, you're in place. And so that, so that's what was done, and then, so then we got asking for the appointments to be made in December before the end of the year came to then, so we had the full board, and there was only five members, so, and three of them are officers. And so, and this year, one of the officers, the Secretary of Treasury is at for, appointment is up, and so if he'd like continue in that position, we're going to have some changeover anyway because of health issues for one of the chairman. And so, just need to try to, so we have everything in line, in case something were to happen, where the board has to act.
So when did you change, when you started electing your officers?
About six, seven years ago.
Six or seven?
Yeah, I was, I was, maybe it's been longer than that, because I was still president, chairman from, till 2013, so it was before then, so it's been probably 10 years ago when that happened.
Well, I look to back up, Alvin, in 2018, the Commissioners appointed one, two, 18, so that would've been January the 2nd. In 19, January the 2nd. 20, December the 30th, but that was a year that Bill was here, and there was no change in Commissioners. 21, it was 1-4, and in 22, it was 1-4. Consistency is what my concern is. If we're going to start making early appointments, then we need to make them for everything. And then we're going to take away the option of, of the new Commissioners having the opportunity to appoint people that they're comfortable with in the, in the years, and we've always done that in the past. And I feel that if you've got four members, carryover, that's 80% of your board, you should be able to address any of these issues, and if you need to have an early meeting, as though, I think the Council has one to organize, first or second day of the year. Just go ahead and schedule one strictly for the reason that you want to elect new officers. But I think if we do this for one, we have to address it for all, and we're going to have, we're going to have, as far as I know, the first female Commissioner here come first of the year. And I think whoever that ends up being should have the opportunity to participate, and I know you mentioned that they can, but they have a legal right to, so I think they need to be sworn in, and they need to make that decision, and that's my feelings on that issue.
My feelings on that, the first meeting I came to 10 years ago was board appointments. I wish they would've picked them in December, Randy, because that was the worst meeting I had went through as Commissioner, by far. I went through some pretty bad ones since, but that was because you was making decisions and making people mad, more or less, if they didn't get appointed at the first meeting. And, and you're right, we're going to have a new Commissioner, and I know that they're signing up for it, but I didn't like that first meeting I went through, so that's just my opinion. I don't have a problem with giving them six weeks for people to put their name in and appoint it by the end of the year, because the Port Authority is a little bit different. That is a lifeline of our industrial customers. It needs to be effective, moving ahead with the leadership. I don't think I can miss a beat, because if they miss a beat, our industrial loads miss a beat.
If one person makes them miss a beat, you've got an issue.
Yeah, but we're all as a team, everybody works as a team, Randy. Kind of like a wheel, every spoke's got its place, to make it run smooth, so.
This is taking away from what's been going on in this county for I don't know how many years, and now you're trying to change it for one group. If you're going to do it, you need to change it for every group, and you need to tell everybody, get your appointments in at the end before you change, because that gives you an opportunity. It's really, we're trying to be fair, follow a protocol, and I feel comfortable they're going to have four competent people involved with the Port Authority that can see that, that an incident that may happen January 1st or 2nd could be addressed, rather than changing something that you've done forever.
Making comments, Al?
I'm just trying, I, both point, boy, they're valid points, both sides, I mean, I, you both make total sense.
I just think, I mean, if the Port Authority, if there's a member missing, they can't make a decision.
No, we.
You guys make decisions, you make them every day, and as we do, if someone misses on the Council, Commissioners, I mean, I mean, we make a decision. The Council has people that miss, and they make decisions, and continue to carry on their business, and I think the Port Authority is more incompetent to do it also. I mean, I just can't, I just can't see that, that one member not being in there would be a critical issue that would have to be, has to change what you've done for years and years and years.
Seems like it's slapping the face to the other four. They're not competent to make a decision, they're going to have that one person.
That's not the, that's not the issue. The issue is, is who can sign what when you need what signed, and it's either the Chairman or the, or the Secretary of Treasur, that signs the documents. And so, in the absence, absence of the Chairman, the co-chairman can sign, in that case then. And then, so, and that's the issue, is the Secretary of Treasurer is the person that has to, has to sign the, some documents in order to get them, and so we'll just have to.
Your bylaws.
Well, I, no, that's state, that's federal law, so, and so, state and federal, that's the issue, not ours, but, but we'll, it's, we're competent enough to figure out how to, the board's competent to figure out how to get it accomplished, so it'll be done.
I've got comfort in you too, that you can get it done.
Not done.
I just don't, and I hate to set a precedence here, because where do we go from here? With anyone else that walks in the door, how can we deny them? And we, and, you're going to have an ugly meeting, Randy, I don't care when.
The first one is always that word for. You're already nervous.
It's kind of let down after Christmas, I know, but it's one of those things, it's going to be ugly, and it's going to happen, and we'll get to it.
Well, I was asked to bring it forward to the board, and so I'm doing it for the Commissioners, and so that's what I'm doing again, so, so that's it.
Well, continuity is another point, and I totally agree, and I see your point there 100%, and there's argument to both sides, but I'll have to admit, the, what we normally done, that tips the scales, in my opinion, you know, so, with all due respect, makes a good point with the, with the appointments were made after January 1st, one was December 30th, but.
Yes, at a time when you weren't changing any members, and you probably came in and thought you'll get this off the table.
Right.
Because it's going to be the same people January 1st. I just think, for sure, anytime there's a transition, but these are all carried out, because all of them expire December 31st.
Yes, it is.
So they're actually active up until the end of the year, so you're, the first of the second, it would be the only window of opportunity that there would be an issue, and.
So what's been done historically kind of tips the scales for me, I mean, with all due respect, I.
Okay, I mean, I.
Yes, Stan?
Well, I, I think I make a sense what Randy says. Wait till the first of the year, I mean, you can get by with the board members that you have until, you know, until first of next year, and let the new Commissioners make, you know, decision, and not let, you know, outgoing Commander make decisions for long term. I don't see any sense in changing what you is doing.
It's a good point, and you're correct, Stan, I agree, it's a good point, so.
My job is to do what the board asks me to do.
Right. No, it's not, and it's not personal, I mean, the board members would like to, you know, talk to me about those, and yeah, it's fine too.
Okay, Alvin, you make me the bad guy, and you did your job.
You'll need, we'll have six weeks to announce, be the middle of November, we'll announce it.
Yes.
At the second meeting in November, then that gives them, so the first day comes.
Wherever that entire list is, Teresa probably has, that needs to be posted at that time.
Right, it will be. It's two pages of.
Yeah. So we'll get it. And hopefully, I mean, I wish we had an administrator by that.
We got another applicant today, I'll share that with you.
Okay, but we'll make it easier.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, the next on the, on the agenda is the Hospital Board, and I'm going to abstain from any discussion. Do you have any Hospital Board appointment?
No, no.
You had an applicant?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, for God's sake, get me some blessed here. Well, I'll let you say who it is.
I'm going to abstain from all discussion.
Okay, so I'll just announce who it is that would like to stay on the board? Is that what you want me to do?
Yeah, and we had already, we had.
We, we announced it six weeks ago.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay. It is Rita Mahoney, she's currently on the board, and it says, "I am writing to request my reappointment to the Perry County Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees. I am nearing the end of my term and would appreciate the opportunity to serve the county hospital for an additional term. Like many, the past two years have been challenging. We have overcome and will continue to work through issues to keep our local hospital viable. I would be pleased to continue to work with the board on the future growth for Perry County Memorial Hospital. Perry County Memorial is vital to our community and for generations to come. I hope you approve of my performance while on the board and see fit to reappoint me at this time. Thank you for your support, Rita Mahoney."
And she was the only applicant, correct?
Yes.
And she has a letter of support from the hospital?
Yes.
We got that.
I was going to say, I don't have it with me, but.
Does her term end?
Mm-hmm.
In August?
September, I think.
Yeah.
There's one hospital appointment that they've done year, while I was looking through the minutes, it was, it's September, October.
I think it's when they end September 30th.
End of September, probably, is the fiscal.
It's always been September.
Why that?
Right, here she's got it written, she said it ends September 30th.
Right.
Yeah, they're probably different fiscal year.
I'll make a, a motion to appoint Rita back on the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made in second, and I abstain. Two, zero, one. Two yays, no nays.
I got it.
Got it, okay, all right. Planning and zoning, Plan, Plan Commission and Zoning Appeals Board, and you said we have not received any applicants?
No.
Okay.
Keep it open.
Okay, ARP Committee, we have, and I've been made aware of it, at our last ARP Committee meeting, that the ARP Committee agreed to appoint Tony Thomas on the ARP Committee. And then it was brought up to me that the Commissioners and the Council was the ones that needed to appoint, and then it was shown where the appointment for Tara Damon was done during the ARP Committee, so there's some confusion. My suggestion is that we vote to approve the Commissioner, the Committee's appointment of Tony Thomas, and that would, I think that would clear it up. But Randy, do you?
Would we just need one then?
No, then the Commissioners have an appointment.
Okay.
Besides that one.
Okay.
But that was where there was some confusion on, on the, I don't think there's any disagreement about putting Tony Thomas on there, it's just the procedure of doing it. So Randy, Tony, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, my question is, I guess my, where did this come from? And, and to give you a little background, before we went through this whole process, after we were putting board members back on. We went back through and followed the procedure that was originally put in place for the Committee and how they did it.
Right.
And the original board, Committee nominated, I can, I watched it, Adam Brothman by Greg.
Adam Everon.
Everon, excuse me, yeah, wrong name, by Greg, and then Charlie Ballmaster nominated Tara Damon, and there was no other people nominated, and then they voted on it, and then Tara just came up, joined the board, and started participating in all the activities. So that's what we used as our basis, because it was a shared position, and that's what they did the last time, is the Committee appointed that individual. So my question is, where did this even come up? Because we just followed the same protocol.
Well, I thought we approved Tara as the joint.
We did, in a different meeting. So, I guess bottom line, but it was also approved at the ARP Committee meeting for Tara, so there was no, I guess there's no disagreement that Tara was on it, and I don't see any disagreement that Tony's on it, so.
My question, did, did the Council then approve Tara?
I think so.
Because even she was.
Eventually.
I don't know.
But that's the way it was originally set up.
I know it was set up as a joint, and then they decided through the conversation that you have two Council, two Commissioners on there, you have a single appointment by the Council, a single appointment by the Commissioners.
The Council did.
And then, that group came in and.
Recommended and voted.
In July, the Council voted.
On Tara.
On Tara.
July what?
The 21.
They couldn't have.
Well, I don't know.
That meeting was the 22nd when they did their nomination.
Well, she's got 7/6/21 here, but it does say, "The Council recommended and voted on Tara Damon at their June meeting to put on the Committee."
So is it June?
I watched that video, I'm sure.
Well, okay, I just.
July 22nd, wasn't it?
I've got a question, Randy, why are we arguing?
I don't have.
No one, no one doesn't let Tony on there that I know of, Randy, clearly.
Welcome, Tony. You don't know what you're getting into.
So let's go on with the next appointment, if that's what you want.
Well, I would like to see, just to make it official, I would like to see a, a motion on putting Tony on the ARP Committee by the Commissioners.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, and I vote also aye, so we're, Tony, welcome again. I think Tony would be viable, I really do. Okay, the other one, there was two other applicants, one was Mary Robertson, this is strictly a Commissioner's appointment.
Does that mean Tony's only halfway on, and the Council's got to approve him now?
I think to make everything right, the Council will have to approve, if they don't, then we're going to open the can of worms again. But if they do, then we're all good. I mean, it's kind of unclear, but the county attorney today said that the Council and the Commissioners need to approve it. So as Commissioner, I'm stepping forward in having this approved it.
My only question is, going forward, you know, Al, along the ARP Committee, you know, is in place, do they get to appoint someone as they did at their very first meeting, you know, as a Committee, they selected someone? And if you watch the video that's out there.
I know, but I don't think that that was the correct procedure that night. My hope is that this Committee will stay intact, and the ARP money will be distributed, and it'll be non-issue, so, I just seem not, start an issue that doesn't exist, but let's move forward. Okay, the other appointment, the other applicants were Mary.
It was just Mary Robertson.
And Pam Jaminski.
And that.
Yeah.
You don't have her, she, you may, I had that one.
Okay, I was going to say, that one's not here. It's just Mary and Tony.
Okay.
And Pam.
And Pam. Look at you, I mean. And Pam. We'll get to, I mean.
So Mary, Tony, and Pam, and Tony's already been appointed. So it's between the other two.
Yes.
I'd make a motion to appoint Pam and I'll tell you my reasoning behind it because there's nothing wrong with Mary. Mary is in a grant writing business and I hope that we have an opportunity as an ARP committee to use some of our funding to pay part of the grant fees or a percentage of it and that Mary might be a viable source to get additional funding. And what I'm concerned with is the appearance of an irregularity with a board or a committee member potentially because she needs to charge for her time if she goes out and chases down some of these grants and stuff. If we can, if we can do matches and we can get more bang for our buck out of this deal, if we can do it, I think she'd be a heck of a good resource for that. And then she needs to charge for her time. But if you're sitting on the committee, I don't want somebody making an accusation that, you know, she's self-serving. But that's, that would be my reason for Pam. Pam doesn't have the issue. Mary, I think, is a good resource for writing grants. And that's what her new business is. And that's my reason.
Well, with the same line of thinking, I think she would be an asset on the committee because of that. And she will be able to separate herself from.
I think she probably, if she gets on the committee, she probably shouldn't be writing grants.
Right. She won't be writing grants for recipients.
ARP money. Because it just would, it just would not look good to do something like that.
Yeah. Yes, she would, she would have to do that. But with her vast experience, and nothing against Pam, but her vast experience, and I think she would be a great asset to the committee.
I like Mary because she's been involved in the community for years and years and years. I don't know Pam, but I know she's probably a great person. Probably would be a great asset. But I'll vote with Mary.
Okay, we'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion for Mary Robertson to be on the ARP committee.
I'll second that. So we're taking the official vote. Vote aye, Randy, copper.
Aye.
And Randy?
Aye, I'm okay with her. I just, I just think that we need to make sure she's not participating in some function like that.
Okay.
So you guys have that conflict of interest statement? She would just fill it out for anybody that she currently.
Yeah, we had that. We all signed it.
Would be able to state any of the conversations or?
The problem is.
It'd be standard with anybody on the board. Fact of the matter, I think that's a good point. Tony will have to, although you're not, you'll have to sign that conflict of interest.
I do, I'm very cool.
Yeah, so I mean, that makes a good point. We'll make sure Tony gets that too. All right.
When we're on the ARP, can.
Mary Robertson, three to.
What have you given updates? Because I got an email, Tom, I think it was one of the first applicants that was approved, was asking about their funding. Where were we at on the first round? I think like 140, like the.
Yeah, something like that. Which one?
Council approved.
I don't whether, I probably responded if they asked me which one it was. You care to say?
I could not say immediately.
Okay.
But it just, I think it was one of the first ones.
Okay, what I've done is now we've whittled it down to what apparently is an acceptable group. I have sent the contract, which we're gonna have to sign, which Tom's got it there, I think, if I remember, when I see the yellow. And they need to read through that. And then also, if it's a corporation or whatever the organization is, they need to have the authority to sign it on behalf of their grant. So they need to provide us that with the signatures and they're okay with the contract. And then we need to fill that out. Pam needs to get her W-9. I've probably got half of the W-9s. The other ones I need to secure yet. And then, once she sets up a vendor account, the checks go out. So we can, I thought about it tonight, didn't do it, we can approve those amounts if we want to. And then it'll just be a matter of Pam getting the vendor set up with the W-9s, getting the contracts signed. But we still have to sign the contracts and some measures. So we'll still have to do that. So if we want to assemble the contracts, approve the list, sign them at the next meeting, we should be able to do that. If that's how you wanna handle it. I mean, we're open, but.
Well, the claims weren't submitted, so.
So we just do that.
Were not submitted for the next.
Yeah. And at that time, I'm hopeful to have all those contracts with the documents necessary to have them completed and vendors set up. I'm still waiting on some. But I sent them all out to the group and they should have, whoever it is, should have, have received an email from me.
See if she emailed you or not.
Yeah, because I saw the.
I, I.
The email that you sent out.
All of the group to make sure so everybody saw who I was communicating with.
And that meeting will be October 3rd, the next commissioner.
The AR, yeah.
Or, and if we get the claims submitted, then we can get the people paid.
Yeah. Or, I mean, if we want to, I mean, we can, we can okay the claims and pay the ones that have.
They have to be submitted to the auditor first.
Yeah. But I mean, so we, if they're dragging behind on their documentation, then we can not make everybody pay.
It was sent to all three of us. I don't see where you responded, but it was sent to all three of us.
Tell them later, because I.
Yeah, if you want to copy this contract, Randy.
Okay, I just, I just, everything been going on the last week. I just was catching up a little bit, sending out emails and I caught that one, so I called it. I need to bring it up, so I need to respond.
They should have received that contract. Now, I had one person that did email me back and said they never received anything. And I said, "If you don't have it, I'll resend it to you." But I never heard anything back. So either it went into a spam filter possibly or junk mail or something because they found it. I'm assuming because they didn't respond back to me, so.
Thank you, Randy, for the update. Appreciate it.
Sure, I answered your question.
Well, I think you did something.
Yeah, I think it's a good. All right, the next thing on the agenda is Kevin Herd with the Veterans Administration. I thought he may be here, but he got Operation Green Light for the Veterans, which is, and I'm gonna read what, it's a declaration that he would like for us to sign. So bear with me. It's, "Whereas residents of Perry County of great respect and admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Perry County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in arms' way for good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as a county veteran service officer for 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. Whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas an estimated 20% increase in service members will transition into civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are on a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas Perry County appreciates the sacrifices of all United States military personnel and believes special recognition should be granted and therefore be it resolved with the designation as a Green Light for Veterans County. Perry County hereby declares from October to Veterans Day, November 1st, November 11th of 2022, a time to salute and honor service and sacrifice for men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Therefore, be it further resolved that in observation of Operation Green Light, Perry County encourages its citizens to pay, in patriotic tradition, to recognize the importance of honoring all of those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence. Hope you wanna look at that?
I think we got that as an email also.
What he's asking is that we make that declaration.
Sure. So does that take a motion?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
A motion made and second, during three to zero, to accept the declaration.
Beginning, you said, Tom, October 1st through November 11th.
He said October through November 11th. He didn't give a specific October date, but I would assume.
October 1st.
I think the email did say something when you mentioned October 1st.
Yeah, I was gonna ask Kevin to present that, but our next meeting is after October 1st, so. Okay. Anything from miscellaneous?
I've got a question.
Okay.
I'm just going through the budget over here. And it just, I noticed that the animal shelter.
Yes.
Was mowed by $13,000. The amount of money that was set aside every, and it went from 35 down. And I'm just curious as to where is it?
I didn't, I didn't remember that being part of it.
Right here, see, we're the shelter contract. We had $35,000 this year's appropriation. Now we're done to $22,000, down to 13. I mean, that's.
I don't remember making that change.
I thought we kept it the same.
So my question becomes, unless it's carryover, you know, they got $30,000 left or something.
It may have been some carryover, and that may be a good damn question.
So I come up with the question, where, what's the status on that thing?
We have a, there was one lady that was, had expressed some interest and now she is, said she's not interested because she started a new job and new career. But we do have a second one and she did not want, she, her name brought up yet, but she is getting ready within two to three weeks of making a presentation to the county. And she will come to the commissioners with.
So.
A proposal.
By the second meeting in October.
Hopefully, that time. She went on vacation and she's been talking to her lawyers and accountants and, and coming up with a proposal. I met with her, Herbie Landers and I, and toured the, the animal shelter. And she's very impressed and thought that she could operate the animal shelter with all of the, the things that came with her. And it was, well, with the, with the commitment made by the, or proposed budget with the county and the, and the income and the proposal of Channelton and Telsi rounded down to a little over $90,000 a year is how much money would actually be coming towards animal shelter efforts.
Okay, just so we, that's been hanging out there. We need to get it addressed.
Right. And I thought we had someone. I thought she was really interested and she had some life changes. But then this other lady through some social media posting questions, she started asking questions, so reached out to her. And, and I was very much impressed. She's very level-headed. She's got a business head on her shoulders. And what I encouraged her, that it would be a, her business that is not ran by the county, that we contract with her to do it. So hopefully we'll get a proposal within the next couple of weeks.
That's good news.
Mm-hmm.
If you look at your, next year's request is 35,000. What's left in the budget is 35,000. So I think that's probably spent some of that, remember, on different items? I can't remember what it was.
This is a total, maybe with eight to five, this here.
It was what was left over.
It may be.
So they're using what's left over?
That's what it was.
And still, okay.
So there's still gonna be 35,000. There was just a leftover from the year before.
I think you can't carry anything over at the end of the year. Remember that, Tom, on anything, at the end of the year, we.
I'll tell you what, let's get Pam involved with the explanation of that.
I just had that by folder and I looked at it a moment ago.
Oh, okay.
Because we need, yeah, because we need to, we don't have budget hearings here. We wanna make sure 35 is in next.
All right, let's get, let's get the explanation. We can put it on the agenda next meeting.
I can ask him if he comes back. No big deal.
I mean, you might, remember that at the council hearings, that's what, you know, if there's anything different with that, we, we thought there was 35 going into next year.
That was on 10.
Yeah.
All right, anything else?
I have a question. You want me to come up there?
Sure.
I actually have two questions. One is about the ready funds. I'd like to have an update. I've called Indiana Economic Development and they told me to check with my elected officials. So I'd like to have an update on the ready funds, the ready grant funds that Perry County is being represented as part of a region, the Indiana First Region. And I'd like to know what projects have been approved. I was in a city meeting and I heard that 500 and something thousand was approved for a sports complex in Telsi. I heard at an RDC meeting that there was 700, maybe 750 approved for the Forest Canton Heights project. And I was just curious, what else? Is there anything else that has been approved for Perry County? And if so, what are those? Or is there anything else on the table as well? So that's my first question.
I will ask Aaron to come and give an update our next meeting.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Is that, I mean, Tom, I mean, are they the ones that provide that list? Because I've looked around too, trying to figure that whole program out, it seems.
Well, I have explained all of that.
Okay.
At the next.
Wasn't casebooked? Didn't they?
Well, we don't know. I mean, I didn't, I've never seen anything other than.
It's a multi-county.
Than.
I understand that.
Right. But I'd rather try to answer piecemeal. I would rather Aaron just.
That's fine.
Explain the whole thing. All, and prepare questions for next meeting.
That's fine. They just told me to ask my elected officials, so that's why I came.
We'll put it on the agenda next.
I appreciate it. And the second thing is the old hospital. So there was, there's a kind of a fest on social media over some situations going on in Telsi with the hospital. Telsi wants to apply for a grant to get it cleaned up. And the property's gonna, you know, potentially be sold. And so it caused me to go back and look through meeting minutes that I had from when the hospital was sold. And it was November 21st, 2017. And I think the only active commissioner that's still active was Randy. So whenever I looked up those meeting minutes, it says that Brian Hurwig came forward, the CEO of Perry County Memorial Hospital, appeared before the commissioners about the sale of the property. And he commented that the current buyers plan to convert the building into housing. And this would put the property back on the tax rolls to collect taxes for the county. My question is, further down in the meeting minutes here, it states that there was a resolution. And I actually asked Pam for a copy of that and I have that. It says at the end of it here, the same date as the meeting minutes. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Perry County, State of Indiana, that the sale of the real estate from the Board of Trustees of Perry County Memorial Hospital to High Hub LLC under the terms and conditions set forth in this meeting have been approved. So what happens when someone has sold a property and it's told that they're gonna do one thing and they do something else, and that thing that was promised never happens? What happens with that?
Good question for Chris.
Chris.
Because I feel like that really wasn't fair to the taxpayers. If you were sold something, I mean, I'm not upset with you, I'm just, if you were sold that and that never happened and the price was given, I think it was $80,000 the property was sold for, and I'm. the property was sold for, and I'm sure that was partly negotiated in on what was going to be done with it, and it was going to be a benefit to the community. I just, I'd like to know, what's the recourse? When something, you know, when something like this happens, and then it, and then.
The question there, the terms and conditions.
Right, the, the contract or.
Actually, if there is a.
If there was a deed restriction or a, I'll, I'll ask Chris.
Well, but I mean, if, if, if there's no contract that says these things, and this is how it's sold to the public, that it's going to be made into housing, and it's going to be back on the tax rolls and all these things, and then this never happens, the whole process needs to be reevaluated for any time a property is sold in the future, because I know, you know, the Channelton Annex was sold as well. And, uh, I was reading through those meeting minutes, and actually Mr. Ramsey, um, who bought that, Mark Ramsey, I believe, said, uh, I think it was you, Tom, asked him what he was going to do with the property, and he said, nowhere in the contract does it say, I have to tell you what I'm going to do with the property. So I think that whole process maybe just needs to be relooked at, or.
What was the date, is that resolution?
Um, it is November twenty-first, two thousand seventeen. So, and, and the meeting minutes reflect it, so.
Okay.
And it specifically says by the conditions set forth in this meeting, so I just was curious what happens to that.
I will, and, and I will see if, if, uh, Chris can address this, that whole situation.
I understand this, oh, okay.
What the resolution legally says and what their legal obligations were. I work, I work.
Right, I understand. I mean, I'm not upset, I just, I just think we need to get this process better going forward, because what, what do we do if it's negotiated for a certain price based on these terms, and then the terms aren't followed through? Who follows up with it?
Did you give them an incentive to purchase a property in lieu of development into a tax base? I mean, I don't know, that's, that's.
Yeah, no, I, I can't, I.
You slipped something?
Yeah, I slipped something. I can't remember.
I just think we should look into that.
Chris look into it, and.
Okay.
Maybe if he's prepared, we'll answer those questions.
And maybe there's nothing that can be done, and, and, but going forward, we know if we sell property, we need to do something better, or something a little different. So, thank you.
Okay. All right, that's it. Uh, next meeting is October third, six P M. right here. Right? Probably voting's got started, isn't it?
Starts eleventh, doesn't it, or twelve?
It, I, it starts after the third, I'm not sure which it does.
Okay, so with that said, Tom, we're going to have to have a different location for the meetings.
Yeah, because the equipment will be set up, right?
Yes.
So you got the armor driving?
We can, I don't know if we got any better option.
That, that's what we use.
We, in, in some years past, we've had them at the high schools on those dates. And I, maybe.
Whatever works best.
Hey, Kelly, I got a question for you after the meeting.
Okay, I'll wait for you.
And, and Tony's out there, I wanted to see him just a second.
Tell me.
Did the, uh, voting, uh.
I gotta leave, I'll lock them.
We have to go.